I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we call the order, and that good note, Kim and all the supervisors are here. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Yes, sir.
Okay. I know you're busy, so I.
If I could get your name and.
My name is Kevin Cornfield, and I live at 160 River Drive. And I just had a little comment about our little raceway, a good one. So years ago, I was on East Pete Borough Council. We had Mannheim Township as our please. They did a good job. I think they're doing a good job here. But I think the township could direct them to give out a few tickets. I've never seen one given out. One day in East Pete, we gave out forty tickets, and it was to some locals too. So they, we all earned, I didn't get a ticket, but, you know. You know, and I, the chief told us, he thought that statistically, that bad guys don't like to go places where there are tickets given out because they don't already stop. So there's a little side benefit there. And, you know, if you guys could protect us, like maybe on Farmingdale Road. I have a good view out on my drive, but other people don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
Hi, I'm Wes from Five Parkside Avenue, and I'm here to give a report for the east side concerning the college.
Okay.
They wanted me to let you know that things have kind of deteriorated a little bit, and they're requesting it's possible to have police, more police presence after the students come back to college. There's speeding, they're going through stop signs, and probably some of our neighbors are too. And there's parking on the street again.
All right. Thank you. Regarding the police, I think you both know that we're going to have our own police department here after January first. We'll have a little more control over where we direct people to go. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anything else that's not on the agenda? No? Secretary's report. Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll go. I'll make a motion thirty minutes.
Second.
Won't favor say aye?
Aye.
Treasurer's report.
November balances for our funds. General Fund and Investments escrow and liability, November balance of seven million four hundred thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and ten cents. Highway Aid Fund, one million fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. Capital Reserve Fund, three million six hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for a November total of twelve thou, or excuse me, twelve million sixty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
All right, we'll submit those for audit and the bills.
The bills, General Fund, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Escrow Fund, one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seven cents. State Highway Fund, twelve thousand five hundred and seven dollars and zero cents. Capital Reserve, zero dollars, zero cents for a total bills of six hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents. Mister Chair.
I.
Move that we pay the bills.
Second.
Won't favor say aye?
Aye.
Reports, Lafayette Fire Company. A total of six calls, I think, in November. Lancaster Township.
Good evening.
Evening.
So you do have the report on the fund drive, like I've talked in previous months, so just wanted to run through some of the highlights quickly. This is with our new vendor OCS, and it's been very successful as far as the data goes, and it's really going to help us, I think, year over year. So the first thing that we have is nice is the donation heat map, so you can see each part of the township and see where the donation amounts are falling. So you can look at different parts and, you know, make assumptions as needed as far as the support from different areas of the township. Next thing I had is the client donor history and ROI, which is nice because this system now allows us to do a return on investment. How much are we spending to do the mail? And all the expenses with printing and mailing and everything else, which we never really had before, was always, you know, well, we spend X and we get X. But this is a more detailed, detailed report. We have a report that goes street by street to show what the different support levels are, and it does have a number of addresses and a percentage. So obviously, you see some hundred percents of one address on a particular, a particular street. But that's going to give you a good overview of, you know, the support by street of the township. And we also have a contributor summary report, and that is in the different ranges of contributions. And we did have a one-time contribution this year, ten thousand, and that was part of somebody's estate. She was a fire chief, a super female fire chief in Lake County, and she was a fire chief in Peckway. So we received a donation from her estate, so that was the largest one for the regular, the regular fund drive. We also break out our residential apartment. So we were forty-eight thousand for residential, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five for apartments, only three hundred and twenty-five for businesses. So this helped us develop. We have a plan. We're going to have one of our members that's going to be going out and visiting the businesses, starting with apartments and nursing homes, because they had really dropped off. One of the nursing homes used to provide about fifteen hundred dollars a quarter, and upon sale of that particular facility, that stopped. So we want to get a relationship going with some of our larger businesses, apartments and nursing homes, to help, to help contribute. So you'll see on a number of these reports that shows the total residential apartment business, you see our total right now, fifty-one, one sixty-eight. And we always try to look at what we think, you know, statistically. So we take the ten thousand out, so we're about forty-one thousand of what we expect ongoing contributions. Now, last year, we did do a walk-around and did knock on a lot of doors of people who had previously given and didn't. So we're going to be able to evaluate that a little more. One thing that we're going to do is we have, I believe, two hundred and twenty addresses that were, gave last year, didn't give this year. So we're going to send a more tailored letter, not just the fund drive-y looking letter, but just a letter addressed to them, telling them how much they gave last year and tell them, you know, the importance of their donation and, you know, how it really helps them, what it goes for, and ask if they could continue to support us. So all of this data has really helped us evaluate, because this is obviously a big part of paying the mortgage. And so we want to have this grow every year, and so having this amount of data is going to help us do that. So we're looking forward to being able to use this to enhance the fundraiser for the apartment. Next thing is, before us, we have three of four board officers that are going to be coming in in 2025. And Brian Beckler, who is going to be the president of the fire company. Andrew Foster is going to be the vice president. Heather Bailey is going to be the secretary. And we have Jason Haynes, who's been at a number of meetings, is continuing as the treasurer. So this is, my last meeting is chief, so I wanted to, you know, extend very deep sincere thanks to the supervisors for helping us get through the building projects. Bill had said a number of years ago, you know, we're going to get this over the finish line, and he was really true of his word in that. And everyone else from, you know, engineering and codes and the road crew and, you know, Tom was out there a lot, Ben was out there a lot, and, you know, just steering in the right direction to make sure that we have something sustainable, so, which we do. And, you know, we just had an event with cookies with Santa that had seventy-five registration slots, and we went up to a hundred.
We had a hundred and thirty people come through.
All right.
So that was in place of driving around the township, which was getting very, very manpower-intensive. But, so, you know, Heather was a big one in leading that, so it was a very successful event, a lot of the community through the new station. We continue to get membership applications because they see it. They drive by it all the time. And supposedly, before Christmas, we're going to have the electronic sign finished so that we can put those things, that it is fund drive time, and that, you know, we need members and we're all volunteer, that we can continue to flash those messages across that sign. So we're hoping by the end of the year, all our signage is done. But, so, but thanks again for all the support through this. It was a huge undertaking, but we couldn't have done it alone.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Steve, for all the time. It took, what, twenty years to get the.
Thirty.
Thirty. All right, let's see. Police report.
Yep. Evening, everybody. The November twenty twenty-four, eighty-six criminal reports, two hundred and seventy-eight calls for service, thirty-nine arrests, had thirty-two crash investigations, fifty-two citations, one hundred and thirty-four traffic warnings. For the year to date, that's eight hundred and sixty criminal reports, just about thirty-seven hundred calls for service, five hundred and thirty-four arrests, three hundred and thirty-four crash investigations, and seven hundred and seventeen traffic citations, and then a little over fourteen hundred traffic warnings. An arrest was made for the hit-and-run, pedestrian hit-and-run on River, so the arrest, arrest was made there. And also, I just want to say, I don't know if I'm going to be invited back for the January to give the, but anyway, I just want to say that, I mean, fourteen years went by pretty quick. I know we always had tremendous support from you guys, always appreciate it, and from the residents. So I know we always, they were always stop by and appreciate our service. So once again, I'm going to extend it to you guys, same thing with yous as well.
Thank you very much. And yes, please come back on the sixth.
Sure, absolutely.
Great. Any questions, anybody?
Can I just say that in my neighborhood, we always appreciate it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have, let's see. Sewer reports are in the back, recycling report in the back. Safety committee, I suppose they're going to meet, they have not met yet. Workshop reports, start with John and Tom.
Good evening.
Aye.
First, you have a couple of items on the agenda tonight. One is a simple, fairly simple time extension for Honeysuckle Lane. The second is a little more complicated. I'm going to ask Ben to kind of brief you on that briefly quickly here, and that is for Taco Bell for a week's saving.
It's a land development plan where the existing Taco Bell restaurant is along Columbia Avenue, and the property owner wants to tear down the restaurant, rebuild it, redo the site with their new model of their store. And so they hired an engineer, went through everything. This is a plan that you would have, should have approved back in July. And unfortunately, this is a developer's engineer who's not really familiar with Pennsylvania municipality's planning code and processing and so forth. And I think this sort of lost sight of the cutoff by which time you have to record a plan after it's been approved. So checked in with them after the plan expired, and I said, hey, you guys still want to do this? And they said, well, yeah. Said, all right, well, send in a request, we'll request, you know, we'll ask the supervisors to approve the reinstatement of a plan. We've done that at least once before for eighteen ninety-six Millersville Road. But it's, I said, guys, why don't you make sure you get all the conditions of plan approval met? You know, everything on the plan that needs to be tweaked, adjusted, get them signed, get all the agreements, get the letter of credit. And so they've done all that. So we're here with their request, asking for the plan to be reinstated rather than resubmitting a new application and going through the county planning commission, the township planning commission, to just reaffirm something that's already been seen. So just, it's an accommodation for the developer, but I don't see it does anything but make things simpler on us as well. So that's the, that's the motion for you tonight.
Thank you.
And in the last two months, you've heard me update you about Creekside South, on how we were making some progress, finding on that. And I'm very pleased to sit here tonight and tell you, they have finished all, the whole project, with the exception of one apartment that they simply, due to issues with the resident, could not get into. So we're going to come back and do that one apartment, but every other apartment has been inspected and remediated for the electrical issues that are there. So we're very, very happy that's finally getting behind us.
I hear that.
Fifteen eleven Ridge is a residential new house. We just got word today that that's coming to a close. Should be, they want a certificate of occupancy. There's a few things we want to check on before we issue that. The ten fifteen Merida Avenue, last month I told you, is coming before the zoning hearing board for variance on the short-term rental. The zoning hearing board did approve that in November's meeting. And last, we are submitting papers Monday for the building code official change with the state, removing Tom as the building code official and replacing him with me. So that'll be.
Moving sounds harsh.
Better than terminating.
But well-deserved, kicking to the curb.
So that'll be done next week. We're going to submit that and have it done before the holidays.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, this is your, your last formal meeting?
Yes, it is.
And I know we're all getting together later on to celebrate your retirement, but thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Been, been a two-way street. You guys have been wonderful to work with and for, and I, I can't be any more appreciative of the opportunity that I've had here.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes, so a few things to highlight from my report under the, working with developers. The Hawthorne Ridge guys, this is Lennar, these are not people I usually compliment, but I really got to hand it to them, there were some issues in a trench in some people's backyards that were brought to our attention. It sounded kind of like maybe there was a sinkhole over a storm sewer pipe, and I said, well, this is not something that homeowners should be dealing with. This is something that the developer should, because we still have their financial security, the responsibility of those stormwater facilities have not been turned over to the HOA. So reached out to the developer, and Lennar got on it, got it fixed within ten days. So saved the homeowners about, oh, almost three thousand dollars. They had a proposal from somebody to roll in and fix it. So I was really impressed that they, they did that. Also impressed by a re-roofing project, you may or may not have noticed, on four oh two North President Avenue. This is a property that has a lot of extra growth along North President, close to Buchanan. But just behind it, right now, if the leaves are down, you can see this very unique roof that got restored. It's called a storybook-style roof with rolled eaves. So this is a wooden roof, red cedar shapes, that the property owner hired a company out of Florida to come up and do this. It was, it was more expensive than some houses might be, just on their own. So it was, and it looks fantastic. So really grateful, and the historical commission is really grateful that this property owner took care of it this way and restored the roof to its original condition. And it's the second time this property owner's done that. She grew up in the house, so she has a lot of fond attachments to the house. The planning, the historical commission is planning for our township's tricentennial. They recognize it's five years away, but they recognize it's only five years away. So I'm glad that they want to get cracking with, with some of the things they have in mind. A lot of good ideas, a lot of hard work on the historic resource inventory update, which hopefully can make its way to you next year for, for approval of that update. And then later tonight, if there's still time, I'm hoping to be able to present to you the retelling our history, and the title tonight is Urban Legends of Lancaster Township.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right.
Is there anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dennis?
All right. Few things for you. If you can't tell, we've been very busy next door with the police build, so that's kept the crews pretty busy. Decent weather, a little cold last week, but the guys were, we've got a few things done to where we can be. In the mix of all that, we've had leaf collection going on, so we've been dealing with that. The bulk's through, we'll be wrapping things up. We also are preparing for winter, unfortunately, someone may or may not curse us this year. But we will be prepped and ready to go for whatever Mother Nisha throws at us. And then we also have finished up the Jackson Drive rehabilitation cover with National Gunite. Provided a report for that, which was fantastic to work with that company. Ben handed that off to me with, with the idea of using Gunite, and it couldn't have been a better turnout for preserving that old stone arch. So we'll be looking at doing that, maybe other places.
Right.
National Archives has its own store of stone arches. And then there's also some, the animal down here at the Meadow Creek Lane was rehabilitated, and I'll be working with Ben to get the historic plaque put up there yet, but as far as the actual work is done, so it's, it's looking pretty good. Unless you guys have any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Chief Getz and Phil Levine are not here this evening, so I'll move on to announcements. Monday, December sixteenth, five to seven, we're going to have the official swearing-in ceremony for Lancaster Township police officers at Maple Grove Community Center, twelve forty Columbia Avenue. Tuesday, December seventeenth, Planning Commission meeting has been canceled. December twenty-sixth, we also have a cancellation for the zoning hearing board meeting, Tuesday and Wednesday, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. The Christmas holiday, the township office will be closed. Monday, January sixth, six P M., it's our annual reorganization meeting for the board supervisors. Tuesday, January seventh, five thirty P M., the Board of Auditors Annual Meeting here at twelve forty Maple Avenue. Old Business, Presentation of the Budget. Do I have a motion to approve? Mister Chair?
Aye. I will move that we approve the twenty twenty-five Lancaster Township annual budget.
I'll second that.
Won't favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Planning and zoning business?
LTPC three thirty, twenty-four sixty Honeysuckle Lane subdivision plan time extension. Mister Chair, I move that we acknowledge a receipt of time extension from Amanda Roff Harbor Engineering on behalf of Scott and Karen Good until Friday, February twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Acknowledged.
Acknowledged.
Right. LTVC three nineteen Taco Bell Final Land Development Plan. I will make a motion that we approve a plan, excuse me, that we approve a request for plan reinstatement of the Final Land Development Plan for Taco Bell thirteen forty Columbia Ave, which was conditionally approved at the Board of Supervisors meeting on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Won't favor say aye?
Aye.
New business?
Advertisement of the draft twenty twenty-five municipal meeting calendar. Mister Chair, I move that we approve the public advertisement of the township's draft twenty twenty-five municipal meeting calendar in the month of this year, twenty twenty-four.
Second that?
I should note that from time to time, we move to different locations for our meetings, and we'll advertise that when the time comes, but that is not noted in this calendar. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Adoption of Lancaster Township Police Department Administrative and Field Regulations.
I will move to adopt the Lancaster Township Police Department Administrative and Field, excuse me, the Lancaster Township Police Department Administrative and Field Regulations as submitted.
Second. Won't favor say aye?
Aye.
Creation of the position of Director of Finance and Human Resources for Lancaster Township. Adoption of new job description and appointment of Lisa Frye as Director of Finance and Human Resources. Mister Chair, I move, or I ask for a motion to, to approve the creation of the position of Director of Finance and Human Resources for Lancaster Township, the adoption of the new job description. the new job description as provided, and appointment of the current financier, finance director, Lisa Frye, as the new Director of Finance and Human Resources.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Before we move on to guest recognition and participation, December sixteenth, the final notices for leave pickup will be going out, didn't you think I forgot that?
Okay.
So, let's see, guest recognition and participation. Yes, sir.
Mike Erdman, one eighty-two eight one drive, this is an overdue thank you to Devin, this, back in September, I think it was, and I missed the October meeting because I didn't realize Columbus State was closed, and I was out of town last month, but anyway, some of the Southern Village residents had questions about their driveways that were being dug up for UGI work, and we got enough questions about that, I sent an email to Devin, and he literally, within two to two and a half hours, he had somebody from the township out there look at him, he talked to the UGI project manager, and he replied to me with a very detailed, comprehensive email, and very impressive, thank you, Devin, the HOA board really appreciated it, the residents appreciated it. And then also, Southern Village also would like to thank, and I'm Township Police Department, we really appreciated your professionalism, you guys, only positive, I only ever heard positive things about you, so.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that very much. And then, this may be a dumb question, but you guys know about the trees that have been cut down on Gable Park Road in the median?
Just heard about it.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up, and some people were asking, like, I don't know, just, just doing this, but I'm sure you guys knew about it, somebody must have known about it, so, okay, thanks, thanks again, Devin, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Devin. Any other comments, questions? Not, I'll turn it over to Ben.
Thank you.
Give me a sec to get your good side.
So what?
He said, give me a sec to get your good side. They're both your good side.
So I mentioned the title of tonight's presentation is Urban Legends of Lancaster Township. Now, some of you may or may not realize that Urban Legends is actually the name of a book that came out recently, and it's a book about C. Emlyn Urban, the most renowned architect who's ever worked in Lancaster County. C. Emlyn Urban designed such things as the Greis Building, the Watten Shand Store, the Stevens School, the Trust Building, on and on and on, all these marvelous, marvelous buildings, and several of them actually were in Lancaster Township, some of them still are here. And so I contacted Greg Scott, the author of the book, and asked him for a list of all of the, the structures in Lancaster Township, all the projects, and he sent that to me, and there are hundreds and hundreds of projects that C. Emlyn Urban did in Lancaster County and, and over in, in Dauphin County for Milton Hershey, and there are quite a few that actually are in Lancaster Township. Greg also came out with a book called Urban Alphabet, you might know that Greg writes a monthly column in the Lancaster newspaper called Design Interventions, where he sort of explains things, every month taking a different letter from the alphabet, so, pretty, pretty fun, pretty fun guy to work with, to tell you the truth. So C. Emlyn Urban was born here in Lancaster County in Fulton Township, eighteen sixty-three, went to school here, was valedictorian, and did really, really well with his career, ultimately though died in nineteen thirty-nine. And Lancaster Township School District, a predecessor of, of, you know, of what this body created, was a client, so there are several projects that Urban did for Lancaster Township School District, and this is one of them, that you can see very plainly today, this is what we know commonly as the School of Cosmetology on Rank Avenue on the east side. Another very prominent building, also another school, is the James Buchanan Elementary School, that is sort of a swing school right now on Southwest End Avenue and Maple Avenue, that was done in nineteen twenty-two, and then there was many, many homes in Lancaster Township, these top two on the right-hand side, I'm sorry, the left-hand side, those are in School Lane Hills, the Georgian revival style of these is so repeated, it just kind of gets humdrum, but if you take one and just look at one, it's, they're really magnificent, but it's just so many of them we have here that you sort of start to get normalized to them. But over on the east side, on East King Street, there's a, there's a beautiful building there, it's kind of run down, it needs a lot of work to replace some of the cedar shakes, and frankly, it needs a paint job, so, that's, that's a project that Urban did. And then this building here is on Charles Road, it's a very charming cottage, but that is indeed a C. Emlyn Urban design. And then, of course, there's Rosslyn, probably the most magnificent building in Lancaster Township, that was built for Peter T. Watt of Watten Shands, and it was built in eighteen ninety-six, magnificent design project. Maybe not so magnificent in terms of its styling, but the Citizens Electric Building down at Engleside, this is where Fairview Avenue and, and Prince Street and New Danville Pike, where they all merged together at Engleside, and that's a building that's now, today, the city owns, uses for various purposes, that was designed by C. Emlyn Urban, and it was a very, fairly industrial building, those smokestacks are long gone, those used to be the tallest things in the county for a period of time. A number of projects were done at the old Alm's House, so here you see Conestoga View, but it's a neat picture from the sixties where you can still see the old county hospital, the Alm's House, the Insane Asylum, that building still remains, that building still remains, I believe that that's the one that was designed by Urban, these other buildings were from the, the early eighteen hundreds, they were not designed by Urban, although interestingly, I'm sorry, can't help myself, these three cupolas on top of that building, they still remain, they were just picked up and, and moved, they're in several different places around the county, they're still, they're existing. Also very interesting, but no longer existent, is a roller skate rink that was at People's Bathing Resort down at Conestoga Gardens neighborhood, down at the very tip, right across from Rocky Springs, there was a roller skating rink that, that C. Emlyn Urban designed in eighteen oh seven, and this is a good place to stop, a fitting end, this is a mausoleum that C. Emlyn Urban designed, it's in the Greenwood Cemetery, you hardly realize that it's in Lancaster Township, but Greenwood Cemetery actually tracks from the city into the municipal, across municipal line into Lancaster Township, and this building is in Lancaster Township, it's a remarkable design, it has sphinxes there on either side of the, of the main entrance, I'm dying to get in there, excuse me.
Yeah.
I would, I would love to see the inside, I have some sketches that were provided, see what it did there, Kim? So anyway, that's where I want to end tonight, but thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. And with that, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn.